City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson, here. Alderman Holmes. Alderman Sendham. Alderman Grover. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris. Alderman Pitts. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn.
June 24th, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements, and I have none, except I hope someone will make Jane Grover's announcement about the Fourth of July. Is someone set to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. City Manager, do you have public announcements?
Wally, do you want the?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. A sad occasion this evening. We've got TV and our Baxter to them. A sad occasion this evening, Dennis Marino, our manager of planning and zoning, is leaving and retiring. Dennis has been with the city since 1990. If you look around Evanston, there's hardly a corner of Evanston that you can't see something that Dennis Marino touched. As many of you are aware, he was a part of the team that transformed downtown. He has worked in every corner of this community on housing projects, on retail projects, on commercial projects. Dennis leaves a legacy of Evanston's future, and that's nothing short of remarkable. So Dennis, on behalf of your colleagues and the council, the mayor's, I'd like to thank you for your many years of service. You did come and left Evanston a better place than you found it. So congratulations.[139.69][139.69](APPLAUSE).
I feel truly honored. This has been a very rewarding experience for me to participate with so many people in Evanston, especially the City Council and the staff groups I've worked with, the residents, the business people, the institutional representatives, and all the private investors and developers who have helped us achieve our goals. So I will certainly miss this. I'll continue to be an Evanston resident and help Evanston in any way I can. Thank you very much.[185.26][185.26](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Dennis. I cannot imagine doing this job without you. You have been brilliant sometimes, most of the time, thoughtful always, and wise, and I will miss your counsel. All right.
Next, Madam Mayor, believe it or not, we have the Fourth of July almost upon us, and we have several things to talk about this evening regarding the Fourth of July. I'd like to start with representatives from the Fourth of July Association. Tracy Alden, who is the president, and his colleagues are here. As I know, the council is aware, we decided the city of Evanston this year, in honor of 150th anniversary, to become even closer partners with the Fourth of July Association than we've had in previous years. And I'm sure Tracy is here to talk about that partnership. Let me just say, it's really been a pleasure to work with the Fourth of July Association. Matt Swankowski of our staff has been sort of Mr. Fourth of July this year, working with the association, and we're very excited about the activities and festivities coming up. Tracy, good evening.
Thank you. Mayor, council, Wally, manager, we thank you for this opportunity to give a quick little piece on what's happening in less than 10 days. The city, it's been a great cooperative venture this year. We just wanted to let you know that you're all invited to the parade. Many of you will be there. If you're not, you will be missed, but it's going to be a great parade. Your contribution, the city has, as you recall, contributed an additional $10,000 to this year's budget for the parade, of which this is, I should have introduced my colleagues here, Hillary Bean and Joan Ducaye, I'm sorry, we're all board members. And that's what brought me to that, because Hillary was the one who puts the parade together and has spent that money. And then, on the other side...
Great fun spending it.
Yes, right.
You'll all have a fabulous time watching the parade.
Yes, we really, for the whole city and surrounding communities. And then Joan is involved with all sorts of things as well, and wants to point out that we, as an association, have matched that $10,000 with our own additional $10,000 for fireworks. So our fireworks display this year is going to be $10,000 more, and it's going to be, how many shells?
Twenty-three hundred shells.
Twenty-three hundred shells this year. Fireworks display will be going off at 9:20 PM down at the lakefront, and I think everybody knows that.
Website?
And then, well, go ahead. Go ahead. Would you like to say something, Joan?
Sure. We're really excited this year that we're going to be with the help and support of the city, broadening the neighborhood playground games by adding three additional sites in new wards this year, because we really want to give every child the opportunity in their own neighborhood to come out and play with their neighbors, and have adults as well as kids come out and have an opportunity to talk and socialize on such a festive day in Evanston as the Fourth of July is. So we are bringing back the games to Elks Park, which has been a traditional site, and so we're really excited to be there. But we're also adding sites in the second ward at King Lab, which I will be running, and Alderman Braithwaite will be coming and joining us, and in the, we decided, third ward, Raymond Park, where we're really hoping to get folks that live along the lakefront and kids that are also in downtown to have that neighborhood feel that we are able to have in the northern and southern wards. So please come out, check out the playground games. They are from 9 until 11, and they are just so sweet. They are egg tosses and watermelon eating contests and three-legged races.
Water.
And Elks Park will be featured, because they will be having the water, one of the fire tricks will be coming, for a spray extravaganza. The other highlight this year will be at Fleetwood Jordane. We are going to be opening up the Fleetwood Jordane Center to free roller skating. So we're thinking about maybe some of those tweens that may be a little old for the egg toss, but would like to come out with their friends for some free roller skating at Fleetwood Jordane.
Fun run, too.
And the Philly, I don't know about the fun run.
Well, the fun run is something new and special that we're doing this year, so if you have little ones, parents are encouraged to run along with them, but you can register online, and it's a little fun run at 12:45 at Ackerman Park. It just runs from Ackerman Park west to the fire station at Reese and back. So it's less than a mile, it's more like a half a mile, and everyone will get a ribbon and a T-shirt and Gatorade and a good time there.
And all details are available at www.evanstonfourth.org.
And we will entertain any questions.
Can you tell us why?
Yes, everything starts at 9:00 AM at all nine locations, and some will go a little bit beyond 11:00. They're like at Elks Park, Alderman, 10:30, expect the fire truck to show up at 10:30. I think those guys know that already. But it goes to about 11 o'clock then. And at some sites, a little bit longer, because some of the established Willard Lincolnwood, for example, they have hundreds of people, and it takes them more like noon to get there. But if you've not experienced it, we certainly encourage everybody to come out and enjoy Evanston 150 this year on the Fourth of July.
Alderman Holmes?
Will there be parking at Bydak Stadium again, and if so, will there be transportation down to the site?
Great.
The parking in the lot at Ryan Field Dyke Stadium, for us who've been around a while, is by permit only. However, the permit will be available online on our website sometime this week, and anyone who's in the parade will be receiving it via email and can photocopy it as much as is required. But we have been asked to make sure that there's wide distribution this year so that the officers don't ticket people who are in the parade. As for transportation, unfortunately, no. Well, if you have some issues on the morning of the parade and want to talk to me, you know, give me a yell. Okay? Thank you.
We are looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But, of course, this is Evanston, and because it's Evanston, we have a municipal code section that deals with the parade. And Alderman Grover very much wanted me to read the municipal code section that deals with the parade. It is Fourth of July Parade Parkway Regulations. Chairs and blankets are only permitted on the parkway on Central Street from the west side of Bent to Ashbury Avenue each year, no earlier than 6:00 on July 1st, for the sole purpose of viewing the Fourth of July parade. No such chairs or blankets are permitted at any time on the sidewalks or on areas where the pavement extends to the curb. Such chairs and blankets shall not encumber, obstruct, or encroach on crosswalks or handicapped access to the sidewalk. All such chairs and blankets must be removed no later than 6:00 PM on the day of the parade. Any person placing such chairs or blankets on the parkway shall assume all responsibility for doing so, and by placing such chairs or blankets on the parkway holds the city harmless for any and all consequences of such act. Such chairs and blankets placed on the parkway prior to 6:00 AM on July 1st or remaining on the parkway after 6:00 PM on the day of the parade will be removed by the city. City is not responsible for the loss or damage to property placed on parkway or removed from the parkway. Section 2. No tape, rope, stakes, or other similar material for the purpose of cordoning off or reserving any area of the parkway shall be permitted at any time. Such materials will be removed by the city. The city is not responsible for loss or damage to property removed from the parkway. Any person placing such chairs and blankets on the parkway shall assume all responsibility for doing so, and by placing such chairs and blankets on the parkway holds the city harmless for any and all consequences of such act. So that is the official regulation, basically, don't put your stuff out on the street before 6:00 AM on July 1st.
And if you want to see a fine Evanston tradition in work, go out at 6:00 AM and grab yourself a Starbucks and watch as people tool around on Central. And as soon as it hits 6:00 AM, the benches and the blankets come flying out, and it's all done in about 15 minutes, and it goes from completely bare to completely full in a very short period of time on the 1st of July. I've seen it, it's worth seeing.
Thank you.
Alderman Rainey?
Is there another rule about handling things during the parade?
Having what? That's horrible.
I believe that may be a rule of the Parade Association, not a municipal code section.
One we worked on with...
With emergency management and the city ordinance. There's no city ordinance, but there is a rule. There is a rule that items may not pass from the parade route to the spectators.
Directly.
Directly. We do allow people to walk on the sidewalks and hand things out, but we don't want you running back and forth to the parade and back to the sidewalk for your things. It's not safe, it's not good for the crowd, and it's...
It's the same as throwing candy.
Falls the same. We used to, people used to throw candy from the parade route. We don't do that anymore. Nothing is supposed to be passed, so we do our best.
And your best is very, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some other notes regarding the Fourth and the Fifth of July. The Fourth is a national holiday, a city holiday, so we'll cover trash collection schedules in a minute, but all city offices and facilities will be closed on the Fourth of July. As the council knows, the council has also declared Friday, July the 5th, of having city offices be closed, but it is not a city holiday. So what this means is that city offices will be closed on the 5th of July, the Evanston Public Library and its branches will be closed on the 5th of July, and the Levy Senior Center will be closed on the 5th of July. All other recreation centers and program sites, the Nice Cultural Arts Center, the Ecology Center, and all of our beaches will be open. So all of you are registered for a camp that would otherwise meet on a Friday, unless otherwise directed by the leaders of the camps, those facilities are open and operating. We will have an alternate trash schedule. Jim Mayworm, the Assistant Director of Public Works, is here, and he'll talk about trash and recycling pickups on the Fourth and the 5th. Jim? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, yes, July 4th, just a quick reminder, there'll be no solid waste recycling or yard waste collection. All of that will take place on the 5th. So we will be collecting solid waste, recycling, yard waste on the 5th, and as well as cleaning up after all the festivities. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Madam Mayor, unless there's any other general questions regarding our activities on the Fourth and 5th of July, the last presentation, Division Chief Jeff Block and Division Chief Dwight Hall are here to talk about the firefighter recruiting process, and it looks like Division Chief Hall is going to be the one making the presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Clerk, City Manager, members of the Alderman, city staff, public, and the media. I'm Division Chief Dwight Hall, Evanston Fire. I'm also the Department Public Information Officer. I'm here on behalf of Chief Kleiber to explain the department's recruitment process to establish an eligibility list for our new firefighters. I just passed out some flyers to everyone. We have posters and flyers made up. I'd like to say a big thank you to Ms. Erica Storey and her staff for putting this together. As you can see, they did quite a job. The posters are all in the city buildings. These flyers are currently being passed out by department members and also members of the department recruitment team. Chief Kleiber has put an emphasis on hiring Evanston residents, so he's made a big effort, as with the last list, to get the message out to Evanston residents that the department wants you. I stole that one. Also to break the ice. The application process is online. It started June the 10th, and it's going to go through July the 22nd. It's all online, as I stated. During this process, there's going to be a department orientation at the high school. Chief Kleiber and a representative from the Human Resource Department will meet with the candidates and explain the chief's overview of the department and its operations. IO Solutions is the agency, that is the testing agency, that is handling the process for the city and the department, and they have two tutorial sessions set up for the candidates on July 24th, 7:00 PM, July 27th, 9:00 AM, here in the City Council chambers. The tests will be on August 24th at the high school. After this, the list will be established, and it will be good for two years. And it'll be, the candidates will be there, will be listed in rank order. There is a change with the way the process is going to be handled now, the state passed a firefighter hiring list bill recently that mandated how municipalities should test and the process they should follow in selecting candidates to be firefighters. There's going to be a written exam, which accounts for 60%, an oral interview, which accounts for 40%, and then preference points. The preference points the city is giving is 16. The state of Illinois mandates that candidates be given five points for military. Chief Kleiber and the Civil Service Commission met, and they came up with 16 points total for all the candidates, and the five points, the military points that the state mandates is there. Evanston residents will be given five points also. If you're a paramedic, you will be given two points. Two points will also be given for basic firefighter certification with the state, and if you're a member of the Department Explorer Program, you'll also get two points, for a total of 16. The written process, as I state, the oral interview, the preference points, and then the list will be established. After that, like I said, the emphasis here is on all the candidates. So I covered the testing process, the written process, and if anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to answer it at that time, or if I don't have an answer for you, I'll research it and get back to you.
Alderman Rainey?
Thank you. What's the availability of positions?
Currently, we don't have any positions. However, we do anticipate some retirements in the near future, and usually when they retire, the city has been gracious to the department in filling these positions as they become available.
Do we have any policy at the moment about transferring firefighters from other communities into here to avoid going to the list?
You know, lateral transfers, I think that's what you're talking about.
Right. From another community, so that they don't have to go through the whole fire academy deal?
We don't, no, we currently don't have one. You know, I'm not too certain, but I will double-check and get back to you.
I would appreciate that. We do hire from other communities when there's an applicant.
We have in past, however, I think what we have found now is that all the applicants, majority of them that takes these tests are well-prepared. They already have all the certifications, paramedic, the firefighter certification, you know, because they've been out there.
So, do you have to take the test if you're an employed firefighter in another community?
Yes.
You do? You have to take it anyway?
Yes. There was a time several years ago where we used to, the city used to accept, we call them lateral transfers. I don't think we do that anymore.
Thank you. I think that answered everyone's questions.
Thank you.
That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, City Clerk. Do you have communications for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. As the township clerk, the budget for the township is in the clerk's office for anybody who wants to view it for the next 30 days, where it started last Friday. You have until the 21st of this month to come and view the township budget if you want It ends the 21st of July, yes. So anytime during the day or week, you can come by and check it out. It's there for your preview. That's all the announcements I have for today.
Alderman Rainey, did you have a question?
As the trustee of the township...
I want to make absolutely certain that that budget is online.
It's on.
Is it?
It should be online. I'll double-check.
Could you please?
Yes.
I mean...
Township supervisor just came in, so he could talk to that.
It's not urgent, but we don't have that long...
Mr. Guespar, did you hear that?
Answer my name.
Alderman Rainey wanted to be sure that the budget will be online.
Yes. We have, I believe that we have sent the budget to the city last Friday.
But did you transmit it electronically or in paper form?
My Alderman, I'm still in 20.
Yeah, I have it electronically, so I'll make sure it's online.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is citizen comment. Due to the number of speakers, each speaker will have, hopefully in 2 minutes and 45 seconds, you can say what you need to. Please give your name and address. And I'll give the first four names, and I'll call you up four at a time. Kristen White. Jordan Cook. 612 Grove. Stefan Bacis. And John, I'm going to really massacre this one, I'm sorry, at 716 Brummel. John, do you know? Thank you.
Krujsh.
What is it?
Krujsh.
Krujsh?
Krujsh.
Okay. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Manager, City Clerk, and members of the council. My name is Kristen White, and I'm a 10-year resident of Evanston residing at 1801 Hartree in the 5th Ward. I'm here tonight to request that you vote to suspend the rules and both introduce and vote affirmatively to support my request for a special permit, a special use permit to open Kazoom, a new children's resale store in Evanston. I've spent the last 14 months researching the local and national children's resale industry, and there exists a tremendous gap in the market that Kazoom intends to fill. Kazoom will redefine children's resale and make it a hip, fun, and youthful shopping experience that appeals to a broader shopping audience. We will sell like-new essentials that lower the cost of raising a child and help parents outfit their children for life. Our product line will include clothing and shoes for children from birth to eight, infant gear, and toys. I have received tremendous support from families in Evanston who are eager to sell their gently-used children's items and find a high-quality, affordable children's resale store to purchase the essentials their children need. We have systems in place to ensure that we will quickly process clothing sold to us so that our store remains orderly and contributes to a positive, family-friendly shopping environment in Evanston Plaza. Along with creating an avenue for parents to easily sell their gently-used children's items, we will also invite local organizations to use our services to fundraise at no cost to them by running donation drives. We have yet to open, and we've already helped local preschools raise $1,300. By adding value to families and organizations, we hope to become a valued member of the Evanston business community, and with your affirmative votes tonight, we are set to accomplish that goal. And I just want to acknowledge all the people in the city that have been so supportive, including Alderman Braithwaite, members of the economic development team, the zoning team. I feel very, very fortunate to be opening a small business in Evanston.
Thank you, and welcome.
My name is Jordan Zoot. My address is 617 Grove, Suite A. I've been an Evanston resident for 13 years since I moved back here, and I wanted to make some comments this evening with respect to the proposed quote-quote assault weapons ban. Starting with a touch worth of background, Evanston hadn't had an ordinance dealing with what you've labeled as assault weapons, but it seems to have come up as a result of passage of the concealed carry bill HB 183, which provides a rule that carves out an exemption for home rule if an assault, if a quote-quote assault weapons ban isn't passed within 10 days of the effective date of the CCW bill. It appears that an AWB suggestion was made by Lieutenant Governor Simon's office, which resulted in a model AWB based on the Chicago ordinance being circulated by the Metro Mayor's Caucus, and seems to provide an impetus to try to ram a bill through. I'd like to continue by thanking Chief Eddington over the past couple months, who's been wonderfully cooperative with some of the other CCW issues that we've talked about. Just to frame a little bit of background in this, in approximately five years ago, the Supreme Court reached a decision in Heller involving Washington DC and the right for an individual to own a handgun. After that bill was passed, Chicago, Oak Park, and Evanston refused to go along, and the NRA and the Second Amendment Foundation initiated litigation. At an early point in the process, Evanston capitulated, reached an agreement with the NRA, and essentially backed out. Chicago and Oak Park continued and wound up writing the Second Amendment Foundation and the NRA a check for a million and a half dollars to cover their legal fees, exclusive of their own fees. I'd like to note that when I hear people use the term assault weapon, the proper definition refers to an automatic weapon, which is capable of firing repeated rounds without pulling the trigger a second time, and it's been clearly defined and has been illegal in Illinois since 1934, when the National Firearms Act was passed. It's also interesting to note that the United States federal government, through the civilian marksmanship program, makes AR-15s available to high school students to learn to train with as part of the United States government's objective of providing marksmanship training to young Americans. When I consider the possibility of what's gone on in this town recently, I note that there hasn't been a crime involving an assault weapon in Evanston, perhaps in 25 years. Of 564 murders in Chicago last year, one involved a rifle. There is absolutely no purpose to enact a bill such as this at this point...
I need you to wrap up.
Okay. If the city has a choice, if the city passes a bill like this, it's going to cost them a million or two, or $2 million to defend this, because there will be litigation to follow up on this, because it's unconstitutional. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stefan Bacis. I live at 531 A Chicago Avenue. I've been a resident of Evanston for nine years. Rather than make any constitutional arguments with regard to the proposed assault weapons legislation, I'd like to focus my comments on the financial consequences of this proposed legislation. How much are you budgeting for the legal defense that you are going to have to make for this ordinance against the inevitable litigation that will occur? This is not a costless proposition. It will be protracted and expensive, and how are you planning to pay for it? Love them or hate them, you have to recognize... how are you planning to pay for it? Love them or hate them, you have to recognize that the NRA retains some of the most experienced constitutional law experts in this country. They are very, very good at this type of litigation, and the situation is pretty blatantly goading them to take action, and this is across the state of Illinois, not just here in Evanston. In fact, since many of the municipalities that are considering this are running off of the same template sent by our Lieutenant Governor, I understand that the complaints are already written, and plaintiff recruiting is in full swing in home rule entities such as Evanston. Outside counsel would need to be retained. Lawyers aren't cheap. Again, I ask, what programs and services are you willing to cut in order to finance the defense of this ordinance going forward? For example, the McDonald versus City of Chicago decision, the Second Amendment Foundation and the NRA cashed legal reimbursement checks of nearly $2 million from the City of Chicago and Oak Park. If you assume that both sides had comparable legal costs, that means that those entities also spent close to $2 million just to defend the ordinance. That's $2 to $4 million to the City of Chicago. That may be a rounding error. In Evanston, we have an annual budget of about $250 million. That's a lot of money. What is going to be cut in order to pay for this? You take that $2 to $4 million, give it to Chief Eddington as a way to enhance public safety. I'm sure he can find much better ways to spend that money. I fully appreciate that you've been backed into a corner by the state legislature, pitting many of your personal ideologies possibly against today's practical realities regarding Second Amendment legalities. I believe the prudent course of action is to accept the practical reality and do nothing. You will note that while many councils are discussing this, few have pulled the trigger. Evanston's not in a financial position to take the lead on this issue. I urge this to be rejected. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, my name is John Krujshell. I live at 716 Brummel in Evanston. I'm a homeowner, a property owner here. I've lived here for 15 years. I'm a business owner, and I employ Evanstonians. I'm also a graduate of Leadership Evanston. I'm an honorably discharged U.S. Army veteran, and I enjoy competition shooting. One of the reasons my family, why we came to Evanston, was because of the diversity in Evanston, the engagement, and the ability for citizens to be involved in political decision-making. And I'm quite frankly, after reading this proposed bill, I'm shocked, because I don't believe any of the veterans groups were brought into this. Anybody who shoots competition for sport were brought into this legislation. I think a great number of people have been alienated from this. Now, I understand the need to stop the violence, and I understand that, you know, handguns should be regulated, but after reading this bill, this will essentially turn me into a criminal. My $3,000 target rifle will now be called an assault rifle when it's simply a target rifle. This will be seized without remuneration or due process of the law, my personal property that I paid for with my hard-earned dollars, and I'll be criminalized. I think it's a very, very poorly drafted document, and there's better ways to achieve your goals rather than taking this out on legitimate, law-abiding citizens. And if you would engage us, we would probably help you write some model legislation all other cities could use. But the way it's written is simply wrong. Please, vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Bruce Merchant, Herb Langston, Dr. Michael James, and Todd Kennedy.
Thanks for hearing me. My name is Bruce Merchant. I'm from 2024 Sherman Avenue. I've been a resident for Evanston for about 10 years. This is the first time I've ever spoken in public before. I'm a combat wounded veteran from the United States Marine Corps of Vietnam in 1970. My grandfather enlisted in the Army in World War I, and my dad enlisted in Navy during World War II. So, I come from a proud family and history of serving in the, serving our country during the war. After Vietnam, I went to college for six years in the GI Bill. After college, I worked for the Federal Bureau of Prisons for 23 years. I started as a guard in Wisconsin, moved to Virginia as a teacher, and ended my career as a principal in Minnesota at the prison school. As you can imagine, I came, I have a long history of involved with violence from, you know, federal inmates and war, and I've had guns in my life, my whole li, I'm used to having guns around me my whole life. I'm here to give my, a little bit of my opinion about this law. I think that you're punishing the law-abiding citizens, and because I think that the violence that has happened in our society has been caused by people who could have had these guns illegally, because they can get them pretty easily. And so that's why I feel that the law-abiding citizens are being punished. I do believe in gun restrictions. I believe that there should be background investigations on people to get guns, assault rifles, pistols, and I think that there should be some people that aren't entitled to have guns, like people that are, have mental health issues. But the way the law is written, there can be minor changes, and criminals can get these assault rifles, or make, or get a gun that's similar to an assault rifle. And I think that the law is vague, because it'll open the door to many, to ban many more semi-automatic weapons that people just use for recreational uses. And then I had some also questions about those of us who own assault rifles, how are we going to have time to get rid of them without being classified as criminals? And do we, do we remove them to another state? And in closing, I lived in five states, Illinois, and Illinois is the strictest of all the guns, has the strictest gun laws in the United States, and is yet, Chicago is one of the highest crime rates with usage of guns. And criminals have a long history of evading the laws and prohibiting the...
I do need you to wrap up, please.
Okay, but Chicago has a, or criminals have a long history of evading laws that prohibit the possession of illegal weapons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Herb Langston. I live at 2410 Thayer. I've been a homeowner in Evanston for 26 years.
And I always use handout.
Sorry, you sir.
Thank you.
Do you want to leave one for her? They'll put it in her pack.
And for you, ma'am.
Thank you.
What you see on the front picture is not an assault rifle, it is a target rifle. I am a NRA target shooting competitor. I use an AR-15 for target shooting. What you may not know is that in 2011, the President's Hundreds Match, which has been held since the late 18th, I'm sorry, 19th century, was won by Illinois's own Conrad Powers. He came in first out of over 1,200 competitors, which gave him the honor of earning a congratulatory letter from the Commander in Chief, who's currently President Barack Obama, who says that these rifles have no sporting purpose. Conrad Powers won the match with an AR-15. The 1,200 people that competed against him and lost also used AR-15s. AR-15s have been the de facto target firearm for over a quarter of a century. The rifle itself has been available to the public since 1964. Since the Army wasn't interested in it, Colt sold it to the general public. It was a semi-automatic rifle then, it's a semi-automatic rifle now. The rifles that are used by competitors will be outlawed by this type of ban, which will have a result in criminalizing me, costing me an extreme amount of money, and will have absolutely no effect on crime. I just wanted to let you know that I think the assault weapons ban as written, is poorly written. It will have absolutely no effect, no intended effect. It will not reduce crime, and I urge you to vote against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Michael James, 326 Cowan Avenue. I have been out here for about 20, 22 years, and I'm insulted that a person would say it hasn't happened here yet. Insulted by that. My, my question is, when can the children play again? When are we as a society going to come to terms that, yes, they do have a right, according to the Constitution, to bear arms? But both sides, pro and con, need to come together with our conscience as a society, because while you're out there target practicing and having fun, somehow, these guns are landing in the hands of the wrong people. We're not challenging your right to own a gun or a rifle. We're saying, what can we do as a society to come up with fail-safe policies, so that these guns do not land in the wrong hands? Because they are not killing you on the rifle range, they're killing our children, black and white. So, I pose the question, when can our children play again? When can they go out on the playgrounds and be children again? Furthermore, when can they go to school? When can they go to a prom? When we as a society quit politicking with the right to bear arms and do what Dr. Martin Luther King would say, search our conscience as a society and come up with a solution to this problem, because our children are the ones that's suffering, not the gun owners, not the politicians, but our children. So, I pose this to you. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all people are created equal. What about the children that's dying?
Thank you. Alderman Rainey, did you have a?
I just wanted you to make a comment about the process. I think some people think we're going to vote on this tonight. You just could clarify it?
This, thank you. This is an information item. It will be voted on in two weeks, July 8th. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Todd Kennedy. Been a resident here for about two years. 830 Reba Place, South Evanston. I'm in opposition of the ordinance to ban assault weapons, high-capacity magazines. This ordinance will do nothing to prevent crime in Evanston. I'd like to have the police chief cite how many of these so-called assault weapons are committed in crimes here. I assure you, it's very few. According to the FBI, from 2007 to 2011, there were 3,900 rifle and shotgun homicides in the United States. This includes double-barreled shotguns and bolt-action rifles, along with the so-called assault weapons on your ban list. During those same years, personal weapon homicides, which include hands, fists, feet, not including knives or blunt weapons, totaled 4,000. Okay, so, again, it doesn't seem like a problem when you have, go up to the handgun section, and it's 33,000 during those years. The mayor is part of Mayors Against Illegal Guns. If you go on their website, in the section, what they stand for, you will see three things. Require all criminal background checks for all gun sales, make gun trafficking and its drop urgency into a federal crime. I think that both sides can agree on this, as long as there's no registration required. The last one is ban military-style assault weapons and high-capacity magazines. So, basically, this organization is called the Mayors Against Legal Guns, because these firearms and magazines are not illegal in the majority of the United States. What is an assault weapon? If I hit my sister with a rock from a slingshot, wouldn't that be considered an assault weapon? Does the government define this for us? These rifles and shotguns that are listed in the ban are semi-automatic firearms used for competition, home defense, and hunting. What is a high-capacity magazine? Who defines what is high capacity? Isn't a high-capacity magazine anything that deviates from what is supplied by the manufacturer of the firearm? Does the government define this too? Do they decide what's high capacity or not? The other thing is, they call these weapons of war. Out of that list, I only see maybe one shotgun that's used in war. The rest of these are semi-automatic, and they're not used in war. And the other question I have, if they're used in war, weapons of war, then what about guns, handguns and knives? Those are using, those are weapons of war as well. A lot of anti-gun senators, mayors seem intent on passing some kind of ban, if only to prove they can, rather than focusing on jobs, the economy, budgets, and enforcing current law. What we have is a council...
I do need you to wrap up, please.
Basically, as a member of multiple gun organizations and in contact with hundreds, if not thousands, of firearm enthusiasts here and nationwide, I will support any lawsuit that these organizations or private parties partake in. I'm aware of one that has already been drafted and submitted to the council. We are very well-funded, and we will fight for our rights, even if it means legal action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ellen Chica, Pat Gordon, Marjorie Fuhara, and Mallard Castile.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Chica, and I have lived in Evanston. I live at 736 Central Street. I've lived there for three years. I would like to start by thanking you, Madam Mayor, for supporting this, for being a member of Mayors for, against illegal guns, and also to Alderman Holmes for saying you would support the assault weapons ban. I listened to the doctor speak a moment ago and kind of changed what I was going to say. I've been a pediatric nurse for 31 years, and I also teach the nursing of children. And in my role as a pediatric nurse, I've worked in intensive care, I've worked in the emergency room, and I work now at a clinic in Uptown that serves homeless people and political refugees. And two weeks ago, I witnessed a shooting when I was walking into the clinic with a patient. I do not see the need to have assault weapons. I understand that the Second Amendment exists and that people want to have handguns for protection or whatever, but I have seen in over three decades, over and over, that children find these guns at home, and they take them, and they blow their face off. They are intentional or unintentional victims of homicide. If there's a gun in the house, statistics show that they're much more likely to commit suicide. I have seen it over and over and over. To say that you want to have a gun, that it's your rights to have a gun to go target practicing, when children over and over are being killed, it seems to me that someone's rights ends at the tip of their nose. For example, we have laws now in the state of Illinois that you can't smoke cigarettes in a restaurant, because second-hand smoke has demonstrated that that can cause other people to have respiratory illnesses and lung cancer. That was a law that was changed. I don't want to walk around not knowing who's got a gun, who's packing heat. It decreases our freedom. It doesn't increase our freedom. I traveled to a country one time where people walked around the police with big machine guns, and you had to be wanded everywhere you went, and metal detectors. You feel less free with that. You're afraid all the time. I don't want that happening in the United States, but that's where we're headed. We have to have less guns, not more guns, because the gun problem in this country, and in Chicago in particular, is a public health crisis.
I'm sorry, I do need you to wrap up.
I'm done, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, and members of the, of the City Council, I am a resident of Evanston at 817 Hinman. I have been here for about seven years. I am both a mother and a grandmother, and I strongly support banning assault weapons. I have several friends who have, who own guns, and they all believe that these types of guns are solely for killing people in large numbers in... for killing people in large numbers in a short period of time. Adam Lanza was able to shoot 154 bullets in less than five minutes. These are weapons for battlefields and not for hunting or self-defense. There's no reason our citizens should be outgunning our police officers. There's no reason our citizens should need these guns. There are over 2,500 other guns that will still be able to be purchased that are less lethal. Please do not let this opportunity to ban, let this opportunity pass to ban these assault weapons. Evanston has enough gun violence as it is and it most certainly does not need to miss an opportunity to get these machines off the street. And I strongly believe we should do the moral thing. We've seen countries like Australia succeed where there have been no mass killings since 1996 when the assault weapons were banned. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marjorie Fuhara from Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. I'm a mom. I'm a pediatrician at Stroger Hospital, ground zero for gun violence in Chicago. I'm back and I laugh to myself on the way here because I realize I'm getting more and more like my mother every day. Whenever something gets under my skin, I cannot let it go and I will not let it go until things are made right. So I'm here to, again, reiterate my support for an assault weapons ban in Evanston. I'd like to address two things that have been said by previous speakers tonight. One is about the definition of an assault weapon. And I rely on the definition given to me by my colleagues in the trauma unit at Stroger who deal with assault weapon injuries. These are weapons designed for the military for the purpose of killing large amounts of people in short amounts of time, period. The second thing I'd like to say is that we don't know what the outcome will be if there is an assault weapons ban. I think a lot of people in the gun lobby like to argue that there's no evidence that we're any safer. The problem is, since 1995, the CDC has been banned from doing research on gun violence. We do not have this information in the terms of public health information. We only have crime statistics. So we do not know what the effects will be. I'd also like to remind everyone why we're even here in the first place. And as I think the first speaker mentioned, it's because House Bill 183 passed in the final hours of Illinois' legislative session. And the bill was written to comply with the federal court's mandate for a concealed carry law, but this law goes far beyond providing guidelines for carrying a concealed weapon in public. I would ask my fellow Evanstonians to be alert to what my public health colleagues in Wisconsin have cautioned me about. After the passage of their concealed carry law, the gun lobby has come back each and every session and chipped away at any gun regulation provided in the initial version of the bill. We must continue to be aware, engaged, and involved in protecting our children and our communities from gun violence. Moms Demand Action is watching and remember, a mother never forgets.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name's Mallard Castile and live at 8417 Kimball in Skokie. So as I'm a neighbor of this town, thank you very much for allowing me a time. I'm up here in support of the guns. I don't think that the assault weapons ban that you speak of is going to get anywhere or have any effect on crime. It's in the families that we need to start looking at the crime, the gangs. It's mostly gang on gang. That's where we need to start. The doctor that spoke earlier, yes, I agree with quite a bit of what he said, but it's not the assault weapons. They're used very little in crime. You can go ahead and check all the records yourselves. That's all I have to say for tonight. I'm in support of the friends here in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you. Joey Rogers, Blair Gerber, and Denise Stoneback and Wanda Reed.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Clerk, City Manager, Council Members. You all come to work every day because you want Evanston to be the most livable city. And I'm not sure if it's in America, or it's in Illinois, or America, or the world, or the known universe, but you want us to be the most livable city anyone has ever heard of or experienced. How can we claim livability if we say our residents need assault weapons to be safe? We don't need or want assault weapons in our city. The laws we make to benefit all of us always limit the freedom of some. That's true of traffic laws. The person who's late for an appointment still has to go 40 miles an hour. The person who wants to take a medication still is protected because we have a law that says it can't be marketed unless it's gone through exhaustive testing. It is the history of people who live together to make limits on the freedoms of some for the safety and well-being of all. We will be proud if you pass this ordinance in a couple weeks. Those of us who live in Evanston and care about our city and want it to be livable, we will be ashamed if you don't. I'm grateful for all you're doing to create a peaceable city for all of us who live, who work, who study, or who worship in Evanston. It is written, blessed are the peacemakers. You have a chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council Members, my name is Blair Garber. I live at 1200 Lee Street in Evanston. I'm a longtime Evanston resident. I've lived here twice in my life, starting in 2001 until now. And I also lived here as a boy. I was here from 1960 until 1974. I went to the high school here and I remember when the high school had a rifle team in it. There were actually guns in the high school and riflery was a club event there. It's where I learned not to shoot. I learned how to shoot when I was seven at YMCA camp. In high school, I learned that I wasn't really a small-bore shooter and that wasn't really my sport. So, I've been shooting almost my whole life. I definitely think that a lot of the things that have been addressed here are for problems that don't exist. There have been murders in Evanston. There has never been a murder committed with one of the firearms that you're proposing to ban. There has never been a crime committed with one of the firearms that you're proposing to ban. So I don't see that it's going to make any difference whatsoever. Even in the city of Chicago, where they had 500 murders last year, there was only one murder with a rifle, a rifle of any kind. So by looking at a subset of rifles, you're not going to make any difference at all. What you're going to do is you're going to take law-abiding citizens and gun owners and basically turn them into criminals and turn their property into contraband. It will be a lawsuit. I was one of the plaintiffs in the Post Heller case and I can guarantee you that I'm ready and willing to do that again. I'm also an NRA instructor. Anyone who's interested in learning how to shoot, I'd be happy to teach them. Anybody in Evanston who wants to be able to comply with the instructional requirements for the concealed carry law, I'm willing to waive my fees as an instructor. All you have to pay for is the range time and the ammunition. The rest is on me. I believe that any gun in the hands of a good person is no harm to anyone, but any gun in the hands of a bad person is certainly a danger to all. There are many, many, many steps that you have to go through in order to get a firearm in Illinois, in Chicago, and in Evanston, and in Cook County. Each step along the way is designed to keep the guns out of the hands of criminals. Yet somehow criminals still get guns. So no matter what ordinance you pass, no matter how many assault rifles, no matter what their cosmetic features, whether you're talking about barrel shrouds or flash hiders or things that actually make the firearm more controllable and more accurate, like pistol grips and forward grips--
I do need you to wrap up, please.
It's not going to have any effect. It's not going to have the desired effect that we all want, which is to make our streets safer and lower crime. So I just hope that you take that into account and look at this very carefully and in the end decide that we have enough laws as they're currently constituted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor Tisdale and Aldermen of Evanston, my name is Denise Wang Stoneback and I'm a resident of Skokie. I was born in Evanston, go to church here, and I spend a lot of time here. I thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak. I'm here tonight to urge you to enact an assault weapons ban in Evanston as soon as possible. Just days ago, we celebrated a very sad anniversary. June 14th marks six months since a mentally ill resident near Sandy Hook Elementary School accessed his mother's unlocked weapons and murdered 20 young students and six adults. The shooter was armed with an assault weapon and 10 30-round magazines. By some accounts, it took him less than five minutes to shoot his way into the school, execute his victims, and take his own life. Less than five minutes to kill 26 law-abiding citizens, victims, and then take his own life. If there's one thing that we've learned from history, is that if tragedy strikes, it can happen again. So could a tragedy like the one in Newtown happen in Evanston? Yes, it could. We are not immune to the problem of gun violence. And if we think it can't happen here, we are naive. Sandy Hook was a wake-up call for all of us. Every death since then should be another wake-up call. And since then, there have been far too many deaths. Over 4,800 Americans have lost their lives to gun violence in the past six months. Earlier this month in Santa Monica, a gunman used a semi-automatic assault rifle to terrorize a college and kill five people. What if that had happened at Northwestern University in Evanston? Many times, people with severe mental illness commit these mass shootings. How can we presume to predict who will fall into despair, become mentally ill, or in a fit of rage, kill someone? We can't. We do not have that crystal ball. It's impossible to predict. However, if we ban some of the deadliest weapons with the fastest firepower, we may be able to save some lives. And every life is a life worth saving. Accidents with guns claim lives, too. Earlier this month, a girl was accidentally killed on her 13th birthday when her stepbrother's AK-47 fired while he was clearing the weapon. He'd forgotten that the gun was loaded. Could a gun accident like that happen in Evanston? Of course it could. The tragedies are too numerous to recount. Assault weapons do not belong in civilian hands. Our founding fathers could not have envisioned the firepower capabilities of an assault weapon.
Denise, I'm sorry, I need you to wrap up.
I am wrapped up. You are doing the right thing for public safety by passing an assault weapons ban. Thank you.
Next is Wanda Reed. Wanda Reed, Gary Gaspard, Carolyn Murray, and Kathy Keys.
Hi. My name is Wanda Reed. Most of you know me. I've been here over 50 years. I worked at Evanston Township for 24. And I will say to the people that wants, don't want you to pass the bill or whatever, until this happened to you, you know, you don't know how these people feel. I had a nephew in Kansas City, Missouri, that was shot down. He was playing football and he was shot down. Keith Tucker was a kid of mine at the high school. Walker was a young man that I mentored at the high school. I ran inside suspension over there for bad kids for 24 years. And I'm gonna tell you something. I've never seen anything like I see today. And for the people that wants the guns, hey, let me tell you. You don't know yet. Marvin Gaye said, "Save the babies." We are not saving them. We are not. And I feel that, what I know, that you all are gonna do what is best for our community. I've been here over 50-some odd years. And I would hope that we would come together as a community. You know, we have division here and we're gonna have to remove it. In order for us to get through our destiny, where we got to go, we're gonna have to come together. We need to. Because if we don't, it's gonna get worse. And if you think you've seen something, I got news for you. Every day of my life, I'm scared when I hear the ambulance going because I don't know what's going on around the school. So I would ask the community to come together with the board members, the mayor, and whoever else that's working in this community for the betterment of us and our kids. It's a shame. I never think that I would experience what I've experienced in this community. So I ask you to put yourself aside. Put yourself aside and think about these little kids that's coming, can't even come outdoors and play. It's a shame. We'll never live like that. That's my son now. I raised him here. He could play outdoors.
Wanda, I'm sorry, I need you to wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you. But thanks a lot and God bless you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Honorable Madam Mayor, distinguished ordermen, City Clerk, and City Manager. I'm sorry to take the, I don't mean to take the discussion out of context. What I'm gonna say is non-German to what I've been here from both sides of the bar. But as you know, my name is Gary Gaspard. I live on 415 Howard Street in Evanston. Two months ago, I was elected as Township Supervisor. Being eager to work as a Township Supervisor, I have made some change. And a while ago, I said I was in training. That was the wrong word. I'm in transition instead. And one of the things that I quickly want to come and share with you before you have the budget is that after a meeting with outgoing Township Supervisor, the Executive Director position was eliminated. We eliminated that position. And thereafter, I found that the Township did not have a flag, a symbol to represent itself. So I was advised by somebody to bring a flag for the Township. There it is. And I would like, I would like to ask for your forgiveness before making this flag and I was concerned you. The flag is about what Evanston is all about. When Evanston was started, Wichita, and 1855, when Northwestern admitted the first student, and 1855 when it become Evanston.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. Wow, so fifty-seven. So, and also, I'm working very closely with the City Manager and the city so we can move the Township Office to Evanston Civic Center. First thing that I want to work with the fiscal responsibilities, as I promised to my diverse ordermen, the first thing we do is eliminate the Township Executive Director position. And I would like to have your blessing for this. And I'm sorry I didn't come before to show you. This is about $300, $200.
$280.
$280.
Thank you, Gary.
Carolyn Murray, 1930 grade. I brought some members of the, I like to call it the morbid moms club because we're surviving mothers of victims who were gunned down. I'm also a prior military person. I was a reservist for over 12 years before my son was killed. I haven't been able to go back to work yet. I just want to show you the shirt that his best friend had. The blood hasn't been able to come out. It's been over seven months. There's still blood on the shirt from when he was-- There's still blood on the shirt from when he was holding my son as he bled on the street, on the sidewalk in front of his grandmother's house where he was gunned down. I don't, wow, you talk about mirrors against illegal guns. Well, when I was in Washington, and I might have told this story before, but I was standing in line with a woman whose legs was given out, and she asked me, could I hold her plate and get some more fruit for her in the line? Because two weeks prior to us attending the State of the Union address in Washington by the president, she had been shot several times with an assault weapon, and her husband during that shooting was killed. Well, because I was rushing, because I had an interview with Congresswoman Chikowsky, so by the time I got to another function, there was tables. We're all delegated by geographical assignments, but I guess I was in the wrong place, and I just happened to sit at the table with the colorblind victims, and they were talking about their stories. I was comforted as I was waiting for the first lady to speak with her by a gentleman who was a colonel in the military. He lost his only daughter when she went to the movie theater by a mentally ill person that had an assault weapon and decided to open fire in a movie theater. I don't have any wonderful handouts. I have a decision that I need to make. This is the marker, the grave marker for my son. I can pass this out, because I don't know if I want option number one or option number two. See, it has Justin's picture on it, but I wanted to get Jesus with the children, and we weren't able to find Jesus with the children with, you know, with more ethnic children.
Carolyn, I'm sorry, you all sharing your time.
We're all sharing time. So if you want, I can have you take a look at these, and you can tell me which one you think is best. Right now, Jesus with the brighter children, that seems to be the most common family favorite right now. But I could pass this around if you wanted to give me some options, because I wanna be, you know, like the others. I first made a reference to morbid moms club when the president had spoken. It was Haida Pendleton, and it was Annette Holt, and it was Pam Bosley, and it was Diana Reese, and somebody, one of Haida's nieces, she wanted to get in the picture. And all the mothers stopped, and we said, "No, no, no. This is not a picture you wanna be in. We don't want any new members in our morbid moms club."
Thank you very much.
Jennifer Francis, and I'll make it really brief. It has to stop. You know, we talk about weapons of war, and I guarantee if it doesn't stop, there will be a war. Because when one of your kids gets killed, you're gonna pull that assault weapon out, and you're gonna go kill somebody. You know, I don't care, I'm gonna tell you, when my son was murdered, if I had an assault weapon, I probably would've killed somebody. It has to stop. It has to stop.
Can I just ask one question?
Thank you. Go right ahead.
My name is Kathy Key. I live in the 8th Ward. I didn't come prepared to speak, but my son was not killed by gun violence, although I did lose my son. So I know the pain that these mothers feel who did lose their children to gun violence. And I just pose the question to those who are against the ban. Would you trade your target practice for the life of a child?
Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Carol? Lisa? In place of Lisa? Okay. Is that okay with the council?
Madeline, are you?
Beg your pardon?
You're not signed up.
Carol?
Okay.
Are we taking Lisa's place?
Okay, thank you, Madeline.
All righty. Madeline Decree, I would just like to say, because of who we are, every person is a sinner. All humans are human. What does this mean? For me, simply speaking, it means all of us, at one time or another, some more than others, have lost our tempers, we have been depressed, some of us have drank too much of one thing or another. In other words, we have made bad decisions in our lives. We are humans. Guns, why do we need guns in our houses? Why do we need guns in our society, in this world? Why do we need them? We are setting an example for our children. Why is it that many people believe if only we keep the guns away from criminals and mentally ill people, we're gonna be okay? I do not believe this is true. I believe and support the Second Amendment rights. I do believe that. But I also believe we need to regulate guns. I don't care who you are, if you own a gun, you should follow the regulations like anyone else, because you're human. Just as the mother just said, when something happened to your children, any of us can lose it. So why do we give anyone that responsibility? I don't care if you are law-abiding citizens. We all are, most of the time. But we should not, just because we are a law-abiding citizen, should we do not have regulation. We should have everybody who own semi handgun and anything else should be registered so that the law enforcement can do their job. And I hear a lot of people saying, "Let the law enforcement do their job." Well, let me tell you something. If you own, and millions of people have guns in their houses, criminals cannot get them, okay? If we have those people registered, we know where to come. The law enforcement knows where to come, make their job much easier. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sharon Walker and Junad Riske. No, here he is. Sharon, Sharon Walker? Okay, Junad. Sharon, well, it says Walker here. Is there a Sharon? No. Go ahead, Junad, sorry.
Junad Riske. I've been a resident here for close to 30 years, and I'm not really, I know a lot of you, everyone's talking about the guns tonight, but I'll talk about something, the council's, what I would consider the council's poor behavior and unethical behavior, and that is the three, the illegal meetings we've had on the sale of the Harley Clark mansion. I FOIA'd the city on this information. It is clear to me, the mayor has made some false statements about the proposal. There were attacks on the young man and the petition he put on change.org to stop the sale of our lakefront parkland, and those are without merit. They came from the city manager and the mayor. In my FOIA to the city, the city has refused to release the bid documents that would clarify the situation of what's going on with the sale of the property. And clearly, if we knew what was going on, there would be all these rumors running through the community. But the minutes clearly state what is going on. As an architect, I can figure that out pretty clearly. There won't be too much left of the site. If you're gonna build a hotel, put a 200 parking space garage on it, and basically, the minutes outline the fact, there won't be any, there'll be minimal lakefront access, even though some are suggesting all the lakefront access will be there. In the minutes, it was, the mayor was quoted as suggesting, "We want more money for the parkland." As I recall, of course, the record, the audio records have been destroyed. And then the mayor and council made the statement, "We would not sell one blade of grass to the park." Now, that's really what I would call rather interesting. But given the proposal wants over two and a half acres of city parkland on the lake, and the fact a large hotel would be built there, I think anybody can understand, there won't be much left of our access to the beach. The proposal even stated limited access to the beach. It also even continues, "There'll be a path built from Sheridan Road." Well, currently, people take their small children, their families, and they come there from all over, from the north end of town, and they drop them off. So will that be there any longer? I didn't see any drawings, and we haven't seen any drawings. The public needs to know the truth of what's going on here, rather than political statements by the mayor and some council members, including my 7th Ward alderman, who runs, has run around and had private meetings with citizens. We need a release of the drawings. The mayor also made statements, which I found interesting, too, about the fact that the Harley Clark mansion needs millions of dollars of repairs. There are no city documents stating million dollars of repairs on the city website. As I stated before, the only document is a $400,000, $403,000, $30,000 code analysis. Where are those documents? Who has them? Let's produce them tonight if you can produce them. Today, I had a very interesting conversation with a former trustee in Lake Villa, who told me about the Lehman Mansion in Lake Villa, that the city basically, the village of Lake Villa bought and converted into a banquet hall for citizens to use.
Mr. Riske, you need to wrap up.
All right, I'll be done. I strongly suggest council members and the mayor stop this proposal and sale. The city's reputation is in trouble already, and yours will be probably in worse trouble. I suggest citizens go to change.org and sign the petition that the mayor didn't want you to sign.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment. Next, we have a special order of business, Alderman Rainey, P1. We are moving the agenda slightly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, we're honoring a former alderman from the 8th Ward with a special street sign. At their May 30th meeting, 2013, the Citizens Advisory Committee on Public Place Names reviewed the honorary street name sign application submitted by Nancy Lyons and Bridget Brown, and supported by Alderman Rainey. It was a unanimous decision by the committee to recommend approval of designating an honorary street name sign honoring Dr. Richard E. Lyons. And I'd like to read the resolution. For those of you not familiar with Dr. Lyons, he was a very prominent man in Evanston. A resolution, "Designating that portion of Austin Street between Asbury Avenue and Barton Avenue with the honorary street name sign, Dr. Richard E. Lyons Way. Whereas, Dr. Richard E. Lyons was the alderman of the city of Evanston's 8th Ward during the 1960s and '70s, and was known as the conscience of the council. Whereas during the time of, as alderman, Dr. Lyons was instrumental in codifying open and fair housing policies in Evanston, initiated CPR training for the city's EMTs, handled the city's park consolidation with the Ridgsville Park District, and applied for matching federal funds for city projects. And whereas, Dr. Lyons is a retired anesthesiologist at St. Francis Hospital, and has resided in Evanston since 1957, and whereas, all four of Dr. Lyons' children were educated in Evanston public schools, and his wife was an active, was active with District 65, volunteered at the Children's Society, was a member of the League of Women Voters, and was a congressional aide to Abner McVie in the 1970s and '80s. Now, therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Evanston, Cook County, Illinois, that, Section 1, the foregoing recitals are hereby found as fact and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, on behalf of the entire citizenry of the city of Evanston, the city council hereby expresses appreciation for Dr. Richard E. Lyons by designating that portion of Austin Street between Asbury and Barton Avenue, Dr. Richard E. Lyons Way. Section 3, that this resolution, 40R13, shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval in the manner provided by law. This will be signed by the mayor, Elizabeth B. Tisdale. I move, Madam Mayor, this resolution be accepted.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to accept the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations to the Lyons family. Next is the consent agenda, and we're moving SP 1 to the consent agenda. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent agenda is as follows. Ordinance 76013, an ordinance to ban assault weapons in the city of Evanston. This ordinance amends Title IX, Chapter 8 of the City of Evanston Code of 2012 to specifically ban the possession, transfer, sale, or display of assault weapons in the city of Evanston. Madam Mayor, it's for introduction. The following is the balance of the consent agenda. First, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 16, the regular meeting of May 28, and the regular meeting of June 10. The Administration and Public Works Committee met this evening, and we--
Alderman Rainey, could you hold the approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting of June 10?
Yes, you did ask me that, I'm sorry. So that is, M3 is off the consent agenda. Administration Public Works met, and the following, we request you approve. City of Evanston payroll through June-- Excuse me. And visually challenged. City of Evanston payroll through June 2 in the amount of $2,624,47.59. The bills through June 25, $2,245,896.49. We ask your approval for the agreement with InfoSend for utility bill printing and mailing services for a two-year term in the amount of $27,507. This will be for two years. We ask your approval also for a continue and maintenance agreement for Sherman Plaza that was established in 2006. This will run from August 23, 2013, through August 22 of next year for a maximum not to exceed amount of $115,000. Your approval is requested for a contract with Eleanor Construction Company for the Fireman's Park renovation project for the base bid, plus alternate bids of one, number one, two, and three, in the amount of $255,400. There's a total funding of $315,000 is available through a variety of sources. Approval of a contract with construction consulting and disbursement is requested for the 2013 Municipal Service Center D Building Roof and Masonery Repair Project in the amount of $39,300. We ask that you approve the 2013 Water Main Replacement and Street Resurfacing CIP Number 2 Project to ALAMP Concrete Contractors in the amount of $1,568,320.50. Funding is provided by the Water Sewer and Street Resurfacing Funds. We ask also that you approve a change order, number 4, for the Evanston Water Utility SCADA Phase 3 Engineering Services to grant a time extension of 153 days to the agreement with CDM Smith. There is no cost to this change order. Approval is also requested to introduce Ordinance 58013, decreasing the number of active Class D liquor licenses to 21, because Wingstop 34, 2434 Main Street stopped selling alcohol in January 2013, and does not intend to renew its license. We ask your approval to introduce Ordinance 64013, to decrease the number of authorized Class D licenses, liquor licenses, to 20, because Vashida Corporation, doing business as Siam Splendor, 1125 Emerson, is not renewing its Class D liquor license. For introduction also is Ordinance 65013, increasing the number of Class P1 liquor licenses to Temperance Beer Company. We're increasing the number of licenses to 1. Ordinance 68013 is for introduction also, and amends Class P1 liquor license capacity by increasing the maximum quantity of craft beer-- by increasing the maximum quantity of craft beer permitted on-site production and storage from 465,000 gallons to 930,000 gallons annually. This mirrors measures recently adopted by the state in House Bill 1573. For introduction also is Ordinance 66013, authorizing Class N liquor license to offer tastings of alcoholic liquor. Class N liquor licenses are held by grocery stores, Jewel, Jewel Osko, Dominick's, Food for Less, Whole Foods, and Sam's Club. For introduction also is Ordinance 67013, authorizing Class T liquor licensees to offer samples of beer brewed by the licensee. Class T is the city's Brew Pub liquor license, and Smiley Brothers Restaurant and Brewery is the city's only Class T liquor licensee. Introduction also is requested for Ordinance 75013, increasing the number of active Class D liquor licenses to 21 to permit liquor license issuance to Kingston Grill Restaurant, doing business as Kingston Grill, 1164 Dodge Avenue. Madam Mayor, I'm also-
Alderman Braithwaite has-
Yes, I'm going to move suspension of the rules as requested by Alderman Braithwaite, so that we can, the chairman of the committee can move approval after this. Next is Ordinance 56013 for introduction, is a text amendment to the city code, subsection 11 to 11 parentheses B, to correct code reference error regarding mailing notices of impending vehicle immobilizations, otherwise known as the boot. We ask your approval for introducing Ordinance 74013, which amends the city code to establish a three-way stop at Dewey Avenue and Washington Street. For action tonight, Ordinance 52013, amending the city code to establish a three-way stop at Lake Shore Boulevard and Hamilton Street. For action also is Ordinance 55013, authorizing the city to borrow funds from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Water Pollution Control Loan Program for the construction of the large diameter sewer rehab on Central Park Avenue and Main Street slash Sheridan Road. This ordinance authorizes the city to borrow up to $1,894,000. We ask your approval also for Ordinance 51013, amending Title 10, Chapter 8, Section 3 relating to wheel tax for disabled veterans and active military. This amendment permits that all disabled veterans and active-duty military personnel who make application for wheel tax license or city sticker for one motor vehicle owned by the member shall not be required to pay under planning and development. That resolution, P. 1, has already been passed. Ordinance 71013 is for introduction and grants a special use for a wholesale goods establishment at 2310 Main Street by Few Spirits. Ordinance 70013 is also for introduction and grants a special use for a Type 2 restaurant, Leonid's Chocolate Cafe at 1907 Central Street. For introduction and suspension of the rules is Ordinance 69013, granting a special use for the resale establishment at 1940 Dempster Street for a children's resale shop known as Kazoom. That's the introduction, Madam Mayor. I also move suspension of the rules. Ordinance 72013, amending a special, amending the special use permit for a Type 2 restaurant at 519 Main Street, known as Starbucks, deletes a requirement that an off-duty police officer be required during certain hours to handle traffic and give tickets. That's for introduction. Approval is requested for a three-year extension for a special use for, this is for action, for the establishment of a dormitory at 1620 Central Street, National Lewis University Pace Program. Ordinance 73013 is for introduction and grants a special use for a yard waste transfer facility at 2533 and 32 Oakton Street. For action is Ordinance 59013, grants a special use for a Type 2 restaurant at 749 Chicago Avenue, known as Dollop Coffee Company and Huja Mama Pie Company. Conditions related to litter control, hours of operation, and employee parking also are included. P. 9 is for action also, Ordinance 60013-
Alderman Rainey, would you remove that?
Oh, yes, I was going to just slip that right in. No, I'm sorry, I had that marked to remove. Madam Mayor, this concludes the consent agenda, and I move approval.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, seeing no lights on for the discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll? And I'm told the score is 1-1.
Yes.
It's in the second, second period. It's in the third?
Just started the third.
Not that you're watching it.
That important?
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
7-0.
7 to 0, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Rainey, could we have Administration and Public Works?
No, no, minutes, I want to hear why.
What?
Minutes were taken off.
Oh, sorry, the minutes were removed.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Fisk has asked me to work with the city clerk on some issues regarding the minutes for June 10, so I will do that, and we'll come back.
Thank you very much.
You don't work?
Alderman Rainey?
Yes, ma'am, one second, please. Here it is. This is A. 11, Ordinance 75013. This is of interest to both Alderman Braithwaite and myself. The operator lives in the Grade 8 Ward and operates a business in the wonderful 2nd Ward. Madam Mayor, I move approval. The rules have been suspended. To pass Ordinance 75013, increasing the number of active Class D liquor licenses for Kingston Grill operating at 1164 Dodge Avenue.
It's been moved and seconded, seeing no lights on for discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll to approve increasing the number of active Class D liquor licenses for Kingston Grill?
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Yes, aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
7 to 0.
7 to 0, the motion passes. Alderman Rainey, does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. And who will be doing planning and development for Alderman Win? Alderman Fisk?
Yes, regarding Ordinance 72013, amending the special use permit, oh, I'm sorry, I went to the wrong one.
P. 4. P. 4. Oh. I'm sorry, it's not-
Is that P. 9?
It's P. 9, thank you.
P. 4 is first, because the rules are suspended for that one.
Oh, all right. This is Ordinance 69013, granting a special use for a resale establishment at 1940 Dempster Street. On behalf of PND, I move approval. First of all, Alderman Braithwaite, you wanted to suspend the rules?
They are suspended. We did that already.
They are suspended, okay. Then I move approval, thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass Ordinance 69013, granting a special use for a resale establishment at 1940 Dempster Street, seeing no lights turned on for further discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
7 to 0.
7 to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Fisk, P. 9.
Okay, P. 9 is Ordinance 60013, granting a special use for a bed and breakfast establishment at 1622 Forest Avenue. And at the request of Alderman Win, I am moving to hold this item to our next scheduled meeting on July 8.
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We don't need to vote on that.
Nope.
All right. Alderman Win could not be here tonight, she is at a conference, city conference. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure the process here, but I would like to make certain that this is being held to a date certain, being our next meeting. In other words, it's not going to go to the next meeting or be held again. Date certain. Okay?
That was the motion.
That, I move that.
That was the motion. I will not be at the next meeting, but-
You don't mind?
No, I'm not going to ask to have it held. All right. We are at call of the wards. Alderman Wilson?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
No report.
Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to remind residents of the 6th Ward and the entire city that tomorrow night at Ben Park is our first Starlight Concert, starts at 7:30 and goes till 9 o'clock, and the band is called Charlie Baran y Grupo Gringo. And it sounds terrific. A Day in the Life of Evanston, the photo shoot competition that we've had every year, and produced a booklet from, is on, back on track. We're doing, we're having, going to have two dates to, for residents of Evanston to shoot this year. The first one being the 4th of July, since that is a very special day in this community. The second will be August 10, and that will, you know, essentially lead us to one more season, winter season, and we'll have completed the entire cycle of seasons, so get your cameras ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I just want to clarify for everybody that on the 4th of July at 10:30, there's going to be an amazing water opportunity at Elks Park at Mulford and Callan. Bring your bathing suits, bring your dog, whatever. It's a huge meadow, there's going to be water everywhere. The last several 4th of Julys, it's been in excess of 90 degrees, and, you know, who knows what's going to happen on this 4th of July? But the plan is it's going to be hot, and this is going to be a wonderful event.
Thank you. Alderman Burrus?
A reminder to 9th Ward residents, there'll be a meeting on July 10 at 7:00 PM at the Levy Center, and go Hawks!
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to thank, take a moment to thank Dennis Marino for his service. As long as I can remember, he has, and as long as I've been active, he's been here, and I think he has served us so well in so many different capacities, and has had a very, very calming effect, I think, on so many issues that have come forth before the council. And I've appreciated, since I've been on the council, his very careful and very thoughtful approach to dealing with issues that come up, especially working with developers and working with residents as well in such a respectful manner. So I think he brought a lot of, just a very nice approach to all of these things for us on the council, and I'm very proud of that. So Dennis, thank you very much, and we look forward to your staying in Evanston.
Thank you.
And also, the loss of institutional memory, I think is getting really sad.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll also dito the words of Alderman Fisk regarding Dennis Marino. I've only worked with him for over three years, but I will also miss his presence and his ability to work well with the residents of our town. I also want to congratulate the 2013 Unity Scholars. I had an opportunity with Alderman Holmes to participate in their ceremony, award ceremony, this past Sunday at Ebenezer Church, to the organization that's been around for 26 years. Over the past 26 years, the Unity Scholars, which is comprised of approximately 26 black organizations in town, have given over $1 million to our students here. So congratulations to the scholars, and congratulations to the Unity organization. Say that again?
And to the march from Saturday.
As well, I'd like to mention the march on this past Saturday that I attended with Alderman Holmes. Also, Alderman Grover was in attendance, organized by Carolyn Murray and many of the faces that you saw today. It was a very peaceful march. I want to give a special shout-out to our U.S. Congresswoman Jan Schakowsky, who was also present. It was a wonderful opportunity for residents to come together that looked like Evanston, and to take a stand against anti-violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I wanted, I totally forgot about saying something about Dennis Marino. My earliest recollection here at the city of something significant with Dennis, and it's been just one thing after another since then, is when there was still a Bell &amp; Howell building at Howard and Hartree, and a Sher Brothers active operating manufacturing company behind the Bell &amp; Howell plant. I remember sitting with Dennis Marino in a neighborhood meeting in the Sher Brothers Cafeteria, talking about whether or not it was a good idea to do a shopping center on Howard Street with big-box stores like Jewel, and Target, and Best Buy. And it was a very contentious meeting, because it was Ann Judy Iello, my husband, and we, it was us against the world in that room. And Dennis was absolutely mortified when one of my dear constituents almost punched me. And later, we went for refreshments, where it was discovered that I went to high school with Dennis Marino's sister in New Jersey. So I just thought that was an enormously amazing thing. But I knew Dennis back in the day when he was at an organization called Voice of the People, and I was the housing director at Howard Area Community Center. And so I've gone back to Dennis since before 1980. So he has, he has always been active in the field of planning, and I think his institutional memory, we need to get hold of him and write down everything he can remember.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
I do. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session, and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C. 11, and C. 21.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mark?
Anything in it is.
Can you drive me home?
121.